Okay, I make that two o'clock, so we'll make a start. If Mr. Menney could take me through the protocol, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. By participating in the meeting, you're consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands up function or intervene in any other way. And would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee, and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings, and the provisions of the council's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. As indicated, I'll now take a roll call for the minute, and I would ask if members would confirm they're present when I call their name. Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
Good afternoon, present.
Bailey Scott? Mark Bailey Scott is absent at this moment in time.
No, I'm here, sorry. I just couldn't get my mute to go off quick enough.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and received a policy from Deputy Lord Provost Caddell, and councillor Black is kindly attending as his substitute. Is councillor Black present?
Present.
Thank you. I've received a policy from Bailey Roberts, and I believe councillor Mills is kindly attending as her substitute. Is councillor Mills present?
Present.
Again, apologies from councillor O'Nakla, and I believe that Bailey Sors is attending as her substitute. Is Bailey Sors present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And finally, councillor Short?
I'm here.
Thank you, councillor Short. Okay, it takes you on to declarations of interests. We're not any members of any declarations to make to the content of the agenda as it stands. There being no declarations, and I advise in terms of the agenda note membership of scrutiny committee, the Deputy Lord Provost Caddell has resigned, and he'll be replaced by councillor Jimmy Black, and this will be effective from the next meeting of the committee. You're asked to note this position.
Okay, I'll accept you for this one, John. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, convener. Takes you on to item three, education, HM inspection of Gleeplands Primary School, so a report by Audrey May, and I believe that Paul Fleming will be speaking to this item in her absence.
Okay. Well, I might be hand over to you to start with then, Paul.
Thank you very much, convener. So this is a report for scrutiny committee detailing the outcome of His Majesty's inspections of education following their inspection to Gleeplands Primary School and nursery class, which was published in October twenty-two four, following the visit in September twenty-two four. It was a short model inspection, so it only focused on two of the quality indicators in both the school and the nursery class. Overall, it was a very positive inspection, where inspectors found many strengths, including, which is always lovely to see, the polite, motivated and respectful children, who are clearly motivated to learn or making good progress in that learning. But also, the staff team with high expectations for learning and behaviour were also noted as a strength, as was the very effective head teacher, who has only been in post for one year at that point. Any areas for development that were found by the inspectors had also been identified by the school and are already and will be included in improvement plans. The evaluations for both the nursery and for the school for both QIs were good. So the report contains a summary of the key findings, but there's also a link included on page twelve, which takes you to all findings in relation to the inspection of the nursery class and the school. And finally, just to let the committee know that Michelle MacLeod, the head teacher, is also here. The parent council chair is unable to visit, so she's currently teaching at the moment. But Michelle's here. If the convener or any of the committee have any questions or comments for Michelle. Thanks, convener.
Okay, thank you. I noticed Bailey McPherson sort of come in with a comment, a question.
Yeah, thanks indeed, convener, and thanks, Mr. Fleming, for your introduction. My comment is basically along the lines of what you've said yourself, Paul. You know, all very positive indeed, and I would just, and I'm sure the whole committee, would like to thank Michelle and our team at Gleeplands for such a positive outcome. I think it speaks very highly of the Quality Education Act Gleeplands, that this is the outcome of the inspection from Education Scotland. My question, and it's probably more for Paul than Michelle, actually, because it just, it was really information on page ten regarding the other relevant evidence, and it indicated that at Gleeplands, all children in P one to three are learning French, and in P four to seven are learning both Spanish and French. And I was just really wondering, and I asked this question because I was at a secondary school parent council meeting a few months ago, when it was obvious that the numbers studying French are higher was actually really low to the point, was the class going to be viable? So I was very heartened to actually read that, frankly, we're starting earlier. Certainly, we're starting earlier, and they certainly did in the case of either of my two sons when they were at school in terms of learning other languages. And I was just really wondering, Paul, is there a policy with regard to learning other languages across the city? And how do we encourage children who have picked up a degree of French, Spanish, or another language other than English when at primary, to continue with that through their secondary education?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson, for your comments. And I see Michelle's face, so I should be very pleased to hear those, and I'll make sure they're passed on to the team for your question. So the answer is yes. We have a one plus two policy, so a national policy which we look to follow, and the basis of that really is the child's home language plus an additional two languages. One of those which should start from P one, and a second one can be introduced then in the upper stages of primary school. And really, what we would want to do with one of these additional languages is for the primaries to work very closely with their associate secondary, so as a cluster approach, to make sure that that's language that's embedded the whole way through is something that the children can pick up, or the young people can pick up as an exam subject when they go into secondary school to help that continuity, but also to make sure it's that worthwhile in terms of learning the language. Obviously, we have to get balance right between encouraging that, giving them the experience that they have the grounded skills, and then the interests of the pupil in terms of that exam or that qualification being of use to them. But certainly, we promote and are actively doing so our one plus two policy in the city. And there are a range of languages, because it is down to the context of school and young people's choice as well.
Yeah, that's very helpful, Paul. Thanks indeed.
Okay, councillor Short?
Like Bailey McPherson, just like to compliment Michelle and the wider team on this report. I happened to be in the school the day that the inspector was there, and I think she probably could have stayed there for a week, and that was just speaking to me, never mind Michelle. But it has to be said that since Michelle has gone into this school, there's been a real sort of physical and change in atmosphere with regards to the way that pupils are learning, the way that they are presenting, the way that they're being offered to learn and work in a different way. And it's very pleasing to see. Unfortunately, we've still got our old Victorian building, and there's only so much you can do with that. But certainly, everything that can be done with regards to making the atmosphere a good place for our young people is definitely happening. And really, 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 really pleased to see that the inspectors are recognising the progress that's been made. And I'm sure it will just continue on under her stewardship. So thank you very much to Michelle and the wider team. I know that they worked really hard, knowing that the inspection was coming, but I can imagine that if there was a drop of a hat in inspection tomorrow, they'd be equally prepared. Excellent work. Thank you.
Doesn't appear to be any other comments, so I'll make one myself. I did think it was a very positive report, and perhaps the head teacher could pass it on to staff. I did have one question that I would have asked, but managed to read to the end of the report to find the answer. And that was, it made reference quite often to almost every child. And then I found at the end of the report that almost every child equated to ninety-one to ninety-nine percent. So I was very pleased with that as well. So I just think it was an excellent report, so well done to the staff at the school. Well, no other questions. This report agreed? Okay, let's move on then, Billy.
Okay, thanks, convener. Takes you on to item four, HM return visit for Baldragan Academy. And again, Paul Fleming will be speaking to this item.
Good ball.
Thank you, convener. So this again is a report for scrutiny committee detailing the outcome of His Majesty's inspectors' return visit to Baldragan, which was published in September twenty-four, following their visit at the end of the academic session in June twenty-four. This is a further visit following the original short model inspection in January twenty-two-three. Of course, the committee and the convener have some further insight into the work of the school and their improvement following the visit by most members last session. And similar to the members, the visit by our inspectors of education was also a positive one. The report outlines their findings, which validated the school and the authority's evaluation of the improvement journey at that point in time. HM inspectors noted the clear progress that Baldragan has made since the original inspection, which only looked at some aspects of the school's work, of course. As one of the key areas is to improve the attainment, and some specific measures related to the senior phase in particular, this takes time. And therefore, it was agreed with the local authority that inspectors would return by September twenty-two-five to look at the impact of the school's work in relation to improving attainment. That being said, you'll see that I've included some positive data in relation to an improvement in this area. An example of this is detailed in paragraph six point two, and that example is, for example, around the S four pupils, whereby last year, fourteen percent in twenty-two-three, sorry, achieved five or more level five, and that's increased to thirty-three percent in twenty-two-four, following the changes and improvements the school has made. So Mr. McInnes, and the head teacher and a member of the parent councils also here, should have any specific questions or comments for our head teacher or parent council chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll just go to questions for Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed. Thanks, Paul, for your introduction. And I think, you know, as you alluded to, a number of us, a last session, a number of members of scrutiny committee attended the school, and I think we were very pleased with the outcome of that visit. I think it gave us a lot of confidence that the school, under Mr. McInnes's leadership, was very much heading in a positive direction. And whilst I think we all accept from this report, which sort of underlines that really, doesn't it, in terms of positive direction, that there is a little way to go, but nonetheless, it is on a positive trajectory. My question's really around the comment on page nineteen from the Education Scotland report, basically saying that all staff recognise that attainment still requires improvement. And I think you alluded to that really, Paul, and obviously, Education Scotland will return in September of next year. My question, and it's probably for Mr. McInnes rather than Paul, is if the school has particular milestones that it wants to achieve, so that it's in a particular place in relation to attainment, when Education Scotland makes a return visit next year, later on next year. Thank you.
Okay, is it Mr. McInnes that's gonna?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so our starting point is obviously within the broad general education, making sure that we've got a shared understanding across the broad general education, that that's moderated, our standards are moderated, so that young people are set up to then access their qualifications in the senior phase, their senior phase qualifications, building that progression. So it's not so much of a reset at Baldragan Academy, but being able to make the relevant tweaks at the relevant stages to make sure that we get progression in place. So we had a big focus on S four. That's where we see the change in presentation numbers, and where we see some of the best results the school has had in a long time. We want to capitalise on that as we move forward with those young people into S five. So, you know, we're building a very, very strong base. We see our literacy qualifications, SCQF level five, surpassed our virtual comparator. So across literacy, across numeracy, and absolutely looking at our key performance indicators for a national five and higher qualifications. But remember that the senior phase is across three years, so we're maximising those opportunities across the senior phase, as opposed to any one particular year group.
Okay, okay with that, Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, that's very reassuring, Hugh, and I'm grateful for your input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Billy Scott?
Thanks, convener. Yeah, I went on the site visit and was really impressed with what I saw, a lot of the initiatives that are being carried out at the school of first class. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So the first one is in relation to one of the areas for improvement, which is in respect of attendance and the behaviour of young people, because that's still being highlighted as an issue. So I wondered what steps are being put in place to address that. And just a wee follow-on from the question Bailey McPherson had asked, because I was going to ask a similar sort of question, but just to ask an additional to that, it's about the type of work that's being done there to try and increase the attainment. Is that a citywide attainment strategy, or is it a bespoke strategy purely for Baldragan and the particular issues that are presenting at Baldragan?
I'll perhaps, convener, come in. Thank you for the question, councillor Bailey Scott, sorry. So in terms of the citywide strategy, we absolutely have a citywide strategy to raise attainment, centred around every Dundee learner matters, and there's particular facets to that. We do have a literacy strategy, for example, as Mr. McInnes has alluded to. However, the strategies are very bespoke then, to how they're enacted in each individual school. So I'll just pass over to Mr. McInnes to give you a flavour of some of the strategies around behaviour and attainment, and some of the particular things. He's already mentioned one, for example, around the presentation policy. We're increasing the numbers at the higher level in Baldragan, which we're seeing coming out in the results as well. So convener, if that's okay, I'll pass over to Mr. McInnes to go into some of the detail.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So as Paul Fleming alluded to there, we've got a number of strategy groups within the school, tied around our three priorities, and that then links back in with every Dundee learner matters. So attendance in terms of presence is very high on the agenda. So we look at our communication to our parents, outlining the impact of late coming, and the impact of family holidays, the impact of any attendance matter, and what that means in terms of lost time in learning. So really just shining a very, very bright light onto the impact of attendance, and that we all have a responsibility either to change the learning a young person can access, because of maybe particular individual challenges, through to just changing that narrative across our school cluster with regards to positive attendance. Behaviour sits around pupil voice, so working very closely with our school community and our young people around our standards and expectations, and eliciting it as much as they can. Because at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's hundreds of young people at Baldragan Academy, but agreeing what is acceptable, what is a positive standard, and then how we challenge and how we address when there's wrongdoing, or when our standards fall below that that we'd be expecting. So pupil voice at the absolute heart of being safe at Baldragan Academy, about being responsible at Baldragan Academy, and about being respectful at Baldragan Academy.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Black?
Billy Scott goes up to me and asks one of the questions I was going to ask. But can I just say that the improvement that has been made over the last few months has been tremendous? They're coming back in a year's time, so you're not, it's not over yet. But really impressed with the increase in the number of presentations and passes at various levels. So congratulations to the school for that.
Okay, just before we move on, probably say the same. I think the visit that we had around to the school was beneficial. It's always disappointing that if a school gets marked rough external inspectors. I think that, you know, it's no good for staff morale, but certainly seen that times are moving in the right directions. But you'll bring a bit of hope back to everyone, that everything's moving in the right direction. So fairly positive report, and I hope you get it all clear when they come back the next time, because, you know, that can only be better for staff as well, rather than having that sort of cloud. But what we've seen when we visited the school was that we certainly did have been collected that we'd keep the school on track and going in the right direction, I feel, and probably inspectors do as well. So as others have said, well done. Okay, is this report agreed? Okay, then, Billy, we'll move on.
Okay, thanks, convener. Takes you on to item five, Craigy Cottage. And again, it's a report by Audrey May, and I believe that Glenn Loy is speaking to this item.
Okay, over to you then, Glenn.
Thank you, convener. This is the second inspection report on Craigy Cottage since it opened last year in September. Colleagues will remember that the first inspection led to an outcome of weak, an overall grading of weak, but occurred just two weeks after opening, when the house team were responding to the needs of a younger group of children and young people. The inspection team have returned seven months later. They've re-inspected the house. They've given the house a grade of good in relation to leadership, and a grade of adequate in relation to care, support and protection, with an overall grade of adequate in accordance with the caring spectre methodology, which dictates that the lowest category is the overall grade. But all four requirements have been met within timescales, and all three areas for improvement have been met within timescales as well. A range of positives, as you can see in the report, external leadership support, oversight from internal management, staff communication skills, training, matching, staffing levels, auditing, self-evaluation, they're all commented on positively. But one requirement, which relates to the damage, which was situation-specific circumstances at the time, and one requirement, or area of improvement rather, relating to risk assessments and notification to the caring spectrum of incidents. All those as well, we can now say confidently, have been met, and the house is returned to the normal annual inspection schedule. So overall improvement, overall a positive report, albeit with those areas for improvement and requirements.
Okay, thank you for that. Billy McPherson, I see you.
Thanks very much, convener, and thanks, Glenn, for the introduction. I think we all understand the circumstances in which the previous inspection took place so soon into the life of Craigy Cottage. And in a way, it was an outlier, because if we look, and it's alluded to in appendix two on page thirty-seven, inspection findings in recent years, other than that one, have been actually extremely positive, you know, goods and very goods and so on, in twenty-two-one and twenty-two. So it's good to see an improvement at this reinspection. I wanted specifically to ask around something that you mentioned, Glenn, and it's the issue of damage. On page twenty-nine, if I read educate, sorry, caring spectres' feedback, they indicate the high levels of destruction within the cottage as a result of incidents was intensive and posed a threat to the safety of children. Now, I was pleased to hear that that situation has improved. I was just really wondering, is the, is the care inspector satisfied that there isn't that, you know, this sort of level of damage? And is there any damage still continuing, I suppose is my question? Or is that an issue that has been fully and completely resolved?
Well, thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson. It did relate to circumstances which were quite unique to when the caring inspector visited, in the sense that, and I can't go into all of the detail, but it involved one or two children who were experiencing higher levels of trauma that might be considered normal. The level of damage caused by them was almost on a daily basis, and it was difficult for the team on that basis to repair the damage timously. It was damage after damage after damage. Those circumstances no longer apply, and I can confidently say with the spreadsheet in front of me, that all the repairs since May up to now have been carried out with no repairs outstanding. So as I say, it was specific to circumstances at the time, and those circumstances are very different now.
Yeah, that's very reassuring. Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, I'm pleased to see the improvement as well within the care home. And I suppose the fact that there's damage, it just shows the type of child that we might try to take on and better their life, which I appreciate that our staff would do whatever they can to make that level of difference. So, you know, well done to the staff, and, you know, hope that young person goes on to, you know, a good life going forward. Miss difficult circumstances that they find themselves in. So pleased that we're moving in the right direction. There seems to be no other comments on this report, so is this report agreed? Okay, thank you for that then. So we'll move on, Billy.
Okay, thanks, convener. Takes you on to item six, firing rescue quarterly performance report. It's a report by area commander Brian Todd, who's present together with his colleague Scott Beady.
Okay, you, let me say a few words on the report then, Brian.
Thanks. Good afternoon, convener and the committee members. Thank you. Just like to take the opportunity to provide you a very brief strategic overview prior to the report, and just some areas of work taking place at the moment. So the Strategic Service Review Programme, or SSRP for short, SFRS, like all public bodies, is facing challenges in financial and operational circumstances. To help ease this burden, we've carried out a package of change proposals during twenty-two-three and twenty-four. Then between April to June this year, we conducted a public consultation exercise to gather input on the future direction of the service. The survey received over six and a half thousand responses, and these are currently being used as a guide to enhance decision-making change options that are strategically sound, operationally feasible and financially viable. The options to be made for final public consultation were planned for February twenty-two-five. However, due to the amount of data and information that we've received, it's likely that timeline will be extended into the spring, and I'll keep you updated on the timescales for that. In terms of local plan, due to the strategic review being carried out, as I've just mentioned, the last year, the SFRS board made the decision to postpone the development of the new strategic plan and new local fire service plans. Development of the next strategic plan is underway, with aim of finalising this in the summer twenty-two-five. And then from that point, I'll start to develop our local plans, considering local priorities for our area based on any potential change proposals from SSRP and the priorities of our strategic plan. And I'll present these to you for scrutiny, and we'll share a more detailed timeline for development with you over the next few months. In terms of home fire safety visit, then, we've developed a new process for that, and we're making changes to how we carry those out. As of January twenty-two-five, the SFRS will be delivering a more targeted visit to high-risk individuals who meet the new eligibility criteria, incorporating wider health and social care issues. This is based around factors which we know increases someone's risk of fire, and that comes from fire fatality research. We've also reviewed and updated our visit content, and are exploring ways to strengthen onward referrals and signposting to and from partner organisations. As we know from experience, individuals involved in fatal serious fires are often known by our partners, but not known to us. We've contacted our key partners to let them know what the changes are and provide details of how organisations can assist us to make communities safer through the delivery of this key fire safety programme. Key agencies and services have been invited to become our valued partners, and building upon the success of our current home fire safety work. We've also offered to provide training and support to their staff, and refer individuals to their organisation to access services where appropriate. Our aim is to work with organisations across the Perth, Kinnos, Angus and Dundee area to raise fire safety awareness, and ensure we have information sharing processes in place to identify and engage with those most at risk. Just thanks for the time. Happy to take any questions after Scott's presented the report, and I'll now hand you over Scott to cover the report provided.
Just a bit of a minute. Bailey McPherson, would you like your question now, or you want to wait on the report? Just a bit of a minute. Billy McPherson, would you like your question now or you want to wait on the report?
It's on the back of the reports. I think it'd probably be better if we had Scott first. Thanks.
Okay.
Hey, afternoon, everybody. I'll just give a performance summary overview. Eh it's a positive report with green arrows in nine of the twelve agreed areas. Eh cover the first row, which is our priority one. Eh incidents are down, casualties are down, but despite the overall positive picture, there were some significant incidents which appendix two details these activities in eh greater detail. Moving on to row two, the summary, which is eh priority two, again, a very positive reduction across the incidents and eh reduction in casualties eh captured by the performance management section, page eleven, given more details within this report. Priority three, which is row three, a slight uptick, which is eh less than ten percent increase of incidents involving our T C's. Most of these were low-speed impact. There were two of these incidents out of twelve which required firefighter intervention to extricate a total of four casualties out of these two incidents who were eh removed from the vehicles and taken to hospital for checks by Scottish ambulance service. Eh priority four, which is unwanted fire alarms on the row four. Despite a welcome reduction eh that we have and eh U F A S incidents, eh our local management team, we are working with our legions of fire safety teams to support and educate eh the duty holders where we identify what we would call repeat alarms eh causing unnecessary unnecessary risk and disruption. And a list of these top five offenders eh can be found on page fifteen of our report. Eh moving on to priority number five, despite the red arrows, there is a downward trend over the three-year period in both areas for deliberate primary fires and secondary fires. Eh for the deliberate primary fires, nineteen out of the thirty-two eh can be accounted for eh as in car fires. We've noticed a spike in that and eh within the deliberate fires, secondary fires within the north area of the city. But our community action teams have reacted to to this eh with targeted initiatives and working with our partner agencies and the police and antisocial behaviour teams and leaflet drops within the areas and doing school visits. Eh priority six, full details of our training and prevention activities can be found on page eighteen of our report. So eh myself and Brian were happy to discuss eh the content of the appendices and the good work that we've been doing or answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, I see Billy McPherson for that.
Okay, eh thanks very much and thanks to Brian and Scott for 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 their input there. Um my questions about eh the information in appendix two, eh notable incidents on page sixty-five and in particular the um rather significant, frankly, domestic fire, call it one grey in place. Um and um I was just really wondering eh and, you know, obviously very grateful to Scottish Fire and Rescue Service for bringing that under control. I think it was a, you know, a very significant fire and has caused obviously significant damage to the the tenement building as a whole. My question's really around the use of appliances, because I know in the report indicates that one aerial appliance eh wa- what came from Dunfermline and um eh one command support unit came from eh Alton's in Aberdeen. Now, they're both an hour away eh approximately. And I was just really wondering, um eh we're we're all very conscious of the fact and a bit concerned, to be frank, some time ago when a number of appliances were removed from the establishment in Dundee. And I'm just really seeking a bit of an assurance that um we're we're um that um it's not normally the norm that we have to call on use of appliances um from as far away as Dunfermline and Aberdeen eh when a significant fire like this actually takes place.
You happy for me to answer, Brian, or you?
Yeah, I'll I'll take this one, Scott. Um happy to answer this one. Yeah, looking at that, I actually um I actually attended this incident myself. So you're right, it was a a significant incident. I decided to mobilise this incident just to give our crews a bit of support um and have a look at the situation. It was a very challenging incident. Eh we did have persons reported at the time and um it was a it was an escalating incident in terms of fire. So the two, the two um resources that you're talking about are command support unit and the aerial ladder platform or specialist resources. So in terms of fire appliances to to operate within the incident, we actually initially, you'll see from the report, we actually initially mobilised an additional appliance because we had multiple calls. So we recognise that there is an incident and we'll get the resources here as quick as possible. The 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 height, the height of a pensive ladder platform was mobilised from Blackness. So we did have that there really quick. Um and also the appliances from Blackness were mobilised as well. Now, our command support unit is based at Blackness. So what we've found is we've found a trend where the significant incidents we generally get, particularly around the city of Dundee, Blackness are usually mobilised to those. Now, if they're mobilised, they can't then mobilise with the command support unit. So what we've done is we've recognised that, we've looked at looked at the gap and we're actually got a paper going through our S L T for governance at the moment. And what we're looking to do is to to provide enhanced support um and and build up, build up that resilience. We're actually looking to move that appliance to Forfar. Because Forfar gives us ninety-eight percent availability with the two pumps there. It sits in a more strategic position for mobilisation through our area. And it means that generally when we get the larger instance in the Dundee area, we'll have more resilience from fire appliances in the area. So we've actually looked at that. So in terms of Alton's coming down, that was the reason it came from Alton's. But we've looked at that. We've recognised that there's maybe a way we can improve that and use our, use our um our resources a bit more smarter within within the Dundee area. So that in terms of the C S U, the height, the height strategy, what we did eh when the the height was initially mobilised from eh from Blackness, it was a, it was actually a a relief crew that came with from Dunfermline. And what that does, it actually gave us a bit more resilience as well because what we did was we were able to keep the height in Perth for business as usual, other other calls that were came coming in. So we decided to leave the height in Perth and actually go out to Dunfermline because it wasn't coming blue lights. It was only to replace what was there. And actually, that allowed Blackness to come back up, get rest. We still had the height appliance in Blackness and had that resilience provided from the east because they had additional resilience in the city of Edinburgh. So it gave us the flexibility to move our resources depending on the demand and actually protected the resilience within the Dundee area. So yeah, really, really happy with the way it went. Eh just to, just to commend the crews and our partners for the way we we dealt with that incident um and a successful conclusion in terms of nobody injured, no fatalities and the building's now under reconstruction, I believe. So um I hope that answers your your question, Billy. My first and happy to take any other questions on that.
Um very happy with that response, obviously. A very thorough eh and comprehensive response, Brian. So grateful to you for that. Thanks.
Yeah, Billy, Scott.
Sorry, I was struggling with my mute button again. Um just out of interest, I wondered um when you attend uh to the residential fires and also do your home safety um uh visits, uh what the compliance is like now for installing the interlinked smoke detectors? Are these getting better? Or um are we, are we at a standstill now and things aren't eh and people aren't complying to the same way as they were?
Um I'll I'll answer that one, Scott, as well. So in terms of the compliance of the new legislation, we don't have the authority to to enforce that and we don't actually record that. And what we do do is through our partner agencies and and look for home fire safety visits. If they're, if they do do not have any detection at all, we will attend to give them fire, fire safety advice. And if they don't have any detection at all, we will fit standalone detection with eh with information that they should, they should either, if they're homeowners, they should fit the linked alarms or if they're um if they rent the property, then they should discuss that with the landlord. And what we are finding is a lot more people are compliant and and fit in the 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 linked detection. But again, like I say, we don't actually keep any records because it's not, it's not a legislative legislative requirement to record that.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh one, I suppose it's a a question about potential households being no compliant with their insurance. Should they not have these linked um uh smoking fire detection? Um so maybe it's a message or press can put out at some time eh to encourage people to engage with that, given that it's legislation. The the couple of questions that I've got to ask myself are, you know, how will, how will you use all your eh eh support by way of eh Dundee partnership and like to get get to vulnerable individuals? I know that, you know, hopefully council would be involved eh from the point of view, we've got tradesmen that regularly visit homes and you know, care workers that regularly visit homes and would hope that, you know, where someone's potentially at risk would bring that to your attention. And and maybe the other thing that you could do is make a comment on the amount of vehicle fires and as to whether you're, there is any trend there that suggests sort of eh there's a, there's a eh, you know, a police issue that, you know, that needs to be addressed by a way of sort of criminality or whatever.
Scott, would you like to answer the question on the car fires? You've got a wee bit more local knowledge than that.
Yeah, the car fires aren't eh haven't been occurring in any specific area and with our like partner agencies, we'll work together if we do believe there is to be any criminality eh towards them. But there hasn't been anything coming away to suggest that it has at present. And like our community action teams as well, antisocial behaviour teams, patrolling the areas, wardens as well. But no, eh as I say, we'll work with the police regarding this.
Okay, thanks for that.
In relation to the home fire sa- safety visits, yeah, I think just going on to the the new way we're going to do that and have a targeted approach to the most at risk. So we're really keen to work with eh key partner agencies and we're very fortunate in the fact that we're a trusted service and we get into people's houses. So we're very fortunate in getting in and and identifying the people that really need our our help. But it's also really important when other people, like you say, tradesmen or other other um health workers, for example, that are in people's homes at one, identify that they maybe do need, they are at risk and maybe do need some help, then know to come to us to that when they need that support. So we're building up that through our new home fire safety eh visit process. We're trusted partners with the people that we work with and through the community planning partnerships, we'll work together to identify the most vulnerable at risk and also train those people and our key partners on what to, what to identify as them being at risk and who needs our help. So it's really is a very, very much a partnership approach towards that so that we can identify the most, the most in need so that we can identify and target those.
Well, hopefully the the council will take up that eh spot of referral role that you undertake, undertake the training. Notice the chief execs looking to come in.
Yes, thanks, convener. Just to advise scrutiny committee, I actually met with Mr Todd this morning. And part of that initiative he spoke about was a single point of contact within the council, but also looking to explore data sharing arrangements so that we can really use that intelligence that we have within the council and potentially within the wider partnership to focus on those key risk areas. So just to provide that assurance that that work will be ongoing and we will continue to work with Brian and his and his team to share what information is possible and continue to support that through neighbourhood services and wider functions within the council.
Okay, thanks for that then. Or thank you both for that. We'll bring in councillor Black.
Just wondered, you've been to Morgan Academy and done some, given some students work experience. Have you got any other schools in mind for the same thing?
Scott, would you like to come in on that one?
Ah yes, eh our community action teams eh work with a network of eh lo- eh local authority schools and eh these are pass round the schools, eh applications are invited, students are are welcomed in. So yeah, it's not just like one school will be eh targeted. There'll be a number of schools as we do with all like our educational eh initiatives eh with the community action team, but that's that's primarily led by Brian Wood and his team eh based at McAlpin Road. They'll see where they need to sort of like prioritise schools eh if if need be. But yeah, it's normally generally open to most schools eh for people to apply to come on to this work experience.
Just just to build it, just to build on that as well, that that was a kind of trial that we had last year. It was really, really successful. And during the success of that, we are looking to expand that through various schools in the Dundee area. And we'll be looking to progress that early next year, February, March next year. Eh the planning's already in place within our organisation for that eh because we absolutely recognise the benefits eh to to deliver into those eh to those schools eh and and targeting the the people that really would benefit from the most. So yeah, just to answer your question, absolutely looking to extend that through through the Dundee area.
That's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Hope, hope you find the next future fire brigade service out of that Dundee schools would be great. So with that, eh is this report agreed? Okay, let's move on then again, Willie.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Take you on to item seven, Dundee Police and Area Quarterly Police Report. And Chief Inspector Icubarius here to speak to that item. He's accompanied by his colleagues, Adam Smith and Inspector Graham Templar.
Yeah, well, one of you guys speak to the report if you're ready to go.
Thanks, convener. Afternoon, all. Superintendent Adam Smith here. I'll give you a short strategic update, then I'll pass on to Colin to provide the report. Eh I'm confident he'll discuss the car issue as well because it's very much on our radar. Eh just in relation to strategic overview nationally, the chief constable has recently launched the twenty thirty vision and three-year business plan eh looking at the future of Police Scotland and it's eh viewed as the next phase of police reform. There's four key areas of focus which are really relevant to local communities, one being safer communities, two less crime, three supportive victims, and of course, fourth thriving workforce because our workforce are of course part of the community. Eh some examples of the work going in that plan includes estate transformation, eh local police and service delivery review, which has been led by Phil Davison, who you'll all know as the previous commander. Eh and eh importantly eh the body worn video eh is coming to Tayside in spring twenty twenty-five. I've mentioned that previous eh committees eh but it was just to give you an update, it is eh coming early next year. We're working on the infrastructure to support that eh at the minute and everyone's working very busily on that. Eh the chief constable has also committed to an annual eh staff survey eh eh and this year eh eleven thousand staff and officers completed this eh where we look at eh the um the way forward within our own organisation. And so just very briefly eh within the command team here, we're looking at the vision twenty thirty and those plans. Eh we'll develop local plans around that and of course, we will consult and engage with this committee going forward about any changes coming forward with that eh acutely aware of eh eh a keen interest in estate transformation in particular. I'll pass on to Colin now to present what is a a very positive report from the police this end quarter.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, just if I could just take eh a small moment. I understand we're obviously here talk about quarter two, but having just passed Halloween and bonfire night, I I'd really like just to address a public thanks if I if I could. And that's really, as we all know, a massive success, a lot of nervousness in the city with regards to previous years in the captain area and the wider Dundee. And really, we we've hit it correctly this year with the community engagement and 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 as we've we've all seen, a real success. So it's just a public thanks really to to council members, to departments that have helped us our partners and 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 S F R S for the the run-up to the other and the work that we've done in the local communities. And elected members, thank you all for for the support and the communication with with communities and and really down to downhill community officers and the community team there, but in particular the members of the captain community who really rallied behind us this year, got behind, supported us, spoke to people in the area, discouraged youths to cause disorder. And there we see a period of five days, Halloween through to to bonfire night, not one serious incident, not one incident to any officers and a real success for the community. I think it was a happy event this year. So I would just like to give my thanks everyone for that in this scrutiny rather than waiting for for the next one. I I think it's pertinent I do. But just moving on then on to um page seventy-six, the scrutiny report, a a performance on on a page eh real positive eh quarter eh again for us. And that's really testament to the hard work that our uniformed officers and our CID investigation and our back office staff are doing in 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 Dundee. And and we're really trending eh the right way, the correct way down and bucking the trend nationally on 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 some things. So if we just look at our ASBO incidents, for instance, at the start of a a performance current year to date, six thousand and seventy-seven. So we we're down from last year two percent. However, uh 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 of more reason to highlight on the five-year average, we're we're down seventy and a half percent. So that is a testament really to all the work that we're doing, in particular around street soccer. You'll aware, we've discussed the ten-week street soccer work that we did in Dundee City Centre as a result of antisocial behaviour there. The work that the the Dundee City Centre team did there with our partners at McDonald's and 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 the chain set and that's been a real success in 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 driving down antisocial behaviour and particularly in the city centre area and wider areas because our our young people have been coming in to that event. Great success. It's been nominated for a number of awards. McDonald's Restaurant received the S F A Football Restaurant of the Year award recently. McDonald's restaurant received the SFA football restaurant of the year award recently as a result of their work with the chain centre and us. And we, our teams have been nominated for a number of awards, in particular the chief council awards and the police federation award. So the work that we've done there, that is a clear example of how we drive down antisocial behaviour. Working with young people who are predominantly eh, eh, involved in antisocial behaviour. And, and really that, that work's going to be taken forward. The street soccer, we will look to roll that out again when we're coming to next year. So it's not something that we're going to just adopt and then drop, but we'd really like to eh, eh, adapt that next year. And in particular, look at other localities around the city and, and possibly running it in the Hilltown, Cold Side areas as, as a project next time. And I'll be looking at that. So real success there. And the work that we've done with explore buses around the school work that we've done, and it's detailed in, in the report that we provided around the work that we've done with young people and the consequences of vandalism to buses and bus shelters. And we know that impacts our drivers eh, and our communities and it reduces services because explore can't provide those buses. So no, real good work around there. And it's our community teams that are driving that and an absolute success and I hope. And, and certainly on the face of it, it looks like we'll continue to drive down antisocial behaviour. So moving on then into, into violence in the performance, we'll see that the top one there robbery, where again, we're, we're trending down. Last year to date, we're down minus 22% and on the five year average, eh, eh, 11%. Our detection rate remains, remains good. Eh, and there are a number of outstanding robberies in that, those figures that were still under inquiry by our CID units. And, and we'd hoped to have some success in detecting them and bringing the perpetrators to justice for that. Series assaults are down again also, as you'll see, we're down 15% of last year. And in the five year average, series assaults are down almost 30%. And that's moving on then to common assault. Common assault's always a difficult one for us. Really around licensed premises, night time economy incidents involving our young people. So whilst the others are trending down, common assaults eh, eh, has gone up slightly, but only by one and a half percent. And our, our detection rate eh, eh, again is higher at 71% than it was on, was on last year. So again, the work's been put into that and the, we're addressing that, that trend up. Moving on to public protection, then rape, reported rates are down to 45 on last year, which was 60. And that's a 20%, eh, sorry, 25% reduction on, on last year. And the five year average is a 20%. So that is a, a, a trend we would like to see and continue. And our detection rate remain, is improved as well on last year. Domestic abuse cases of domestic abuse are slightly up to 75, not a massive increase. However, that gives me confidence that our victims are trusting us, reporting it. And our, and our detection rate eh, eh, is sitting in a good place as well. There are still a number of domestic crimes outstanding in Dundee that, which are currently under investigation. So I am confident that that detection rate will increase as we carry out inquiries, identify evidence and then, and then bring the perpetrators to court for that. Onto road safety then, speeding offences are up again to 125. And that is down to the work that our camera partnership do with our mobile camera vans and our roads policing unit. So yes, whilst it's an increase, what it demonstrates is that our roads policing teams and our camera vans are out on the roads. They're deterring people from speeding and they're catching the people that are speeding, which inevitably cause the accidents and, and the road casually. So eh, an increase eh, it's not a negative thing. It's definitely a, a positive thing because we are, we're capturing the perpetrators. And drink driving, yeah, there has been a big increase. I don't have the, the reasons for that. We're 137 current year to date and last year we were only 85. I'm not really sure if the, the real reasons behind that, but again, it's probably testament to our roads policing unit being visible. Eh, and our officers stopping vehicles when they need to, people reporting, members of public reporting people drink driving and us being able to respond to it quickly and stop them. So again, eh, you know, eh, every drink driver and drug driver off the road is a good thing. And everyone put to the court and given a ban and dealt with eh, eh, is a positive thing. Eh, so whilst that number's up, that is really about the education piece, I would say. And people are still continuing to drink, drive and drug drive, but we are capturing them, which is a good thing. And then lastly, just on to a, a quizz of crime eh, which again is a downtrend in Dundee. Housebrakings are down, motor vehicle crimes down and against the national eh, trend of shoplifters increasing. In fact, Dundee's bucking that trend where nationally we're seeing up shoplifters increase. And then Dundee is decreasing with a, a very good detection rate, given how difficult shoplifters are to investigate. But I would put that down to, we've done a lot of work with BP station up in Charleston on the Kingsway. There's a lot of concerns with repeated, repeated shoplifters there. We'll have, you know, shops such as Sainsbury's on the Perth Road etcetera, which have been targeted on, on multiple occasions. Eh, and then obviously our retail environment in the, in the city centre area. So a lot of the work our community teams and our, and our city centre policing team are doing around, doing in that area. And it's certainly driving down shoplifters, deterring and we're getting them detected. And of course, eh, it's what we're doing about eh, what we're doing with retailers as well to, to prevent it. So that's the performance on the page. I'll take any further questions, but in, in particular obviously fire service and, and, and Brian touched on the, the car fires. And I'm sure you would like to hear our comments on that as well. So yes, according to fire service, there have been more vehicle fires. We are inherently aware of the issue. Recent assessment is that the majority of those car fires are, are linked to feuds between individuals who are known to one another. There is a trend in Dundee unfortunately at the moment where people who are likely to be involved in, in drug supply eh, eh, and being concerned of supply and involved in feuds with other people eh, eh, involved in serious organised crime. There's a method of setting fires to cars to, as a target to one another. So we've seen the trend. What I would say is that all vehicle fires now are investigated by eh, CID. There's a review by our, our, our investigation department. They'll review all the vehicle fires. Eh, see what lines of kinds we have. And inherently in a lot of these, there's a lot of intelligence and information in the background which would, would point to feuds between certain individuals. Probably something they could bring to the next scrutiny in the next quarter. Because in the last three months, there've been a, a number of vehicle fires, in particular this week. We've had three already in, in Dundee, which are under investigation by CID. And we've had some real positive outcomes over the last couple of months. In particular, one individual's now been arrested and reported for five vehicle fires across Dundee. Eh, and that was all linked to eh, eh, a drugs feud. And there was an intelligence picture behind that. So quite happy to discuss that at the next scrutiny, if, if we're looking to ask more questions about that and, and bring some figures. I don't actually have the numbers and the detections, but I'll take that note and it's maybe something we can put on the next report. But I hope that covers everything and I'll take any questions.
Eh, eh, I'd be happy for that, eh, me on the next report. Eh, that, that sounds very helpful. I'll, I'll just maybe pass you over to questions and the, the first one's from Billy McPherson.
Right, thanks indeed, eh, convenor. And thanks to both Adam and Colin for their, their input there. I, I maybe start with a little comment and it's regarding what Colin had to say regarding Halloween. And, and my group colleague councillor Coleman, who represents the area, as do two other people on the call today. Eh, eh, the, the includes captain has commented to me extremely favourably about the, the, the work of the police and partner organisations, including obviously Scottish Fire and Rescue Service and, and the city council in a, you know, much more happy, positive situation eh, this eh, this end of October, start of November eh, than sadly we'd previously seen. So that's, that's a real positive and very grateful to all who contributed. Eh, I have two questions and I'll ask them separately because they're entirely unconnected. Eh, the, eh, in, in the updates there, the estates review was mentioned. And I, I think we were all aware because Police Scotland had advised us about the, the three buildings that were under review. Eh, which eh, eh, if I recall correctly are the annex to the eh, the, the, the Bell Street headquarters. Eh, what I always think of as the old Scottish hydroelectric building, as it was many years ago. Eh, and two local eh, police stations, one, one being in my own eh, ward, eh, which I'd be very sad frankly to see close. However, we were completely unaware of any eh, discussions eh, about the potential future of Bell Street. And I congratulate the, the courier for their scoop, but I was just really wondering if you could give us some indication of the status of that eh, eh, information, time scales, consultation etcetera, etcetera. And eh, where, where that actually sits in relation to the, the future of the Bell Street headquarters.
Eh, Billy, I'll come in in relation to that. So ACC Mark Severland has national oversight of the state transformation. Eh, and eh, there's been eh, discussions with the Scottish government about future financing for our eh, reform of that. So obviously budget day to day. So that's a, a sort of key eh, eh factor in it. So I'm hopeful in the coming weeks and months that we'll have some more eh, information to give you all about what the plan looks like and the consultation around that. So I'm, I'm aware of previous discussions about local stations that you've, you've raised at previous eh, eh, meetings like this. So I, I will aim to go away and come back with a firmer timeline of what that looks like, eh, what the proposals are and the consultation around that. I'll, I'll take that as an action if that's okay.
Yeah, that's very helpful. I should say specifically in relation to Rai Hill, I have a meeting with eh, some officers next week along with eh, councillor Crichton and, and the community's officer for our area eh, which, which, which is helpful. But eh, in specific regard to eh, the Bell Street headquarters, it'd be useful, you know, obviously we're, we're aware of the other ones. But it'd be useful to eh, hear further as, as matters progress. My other issue is eh, it's not an issue, it's just a question really. On page 88 eh, under local priority and activity eh, there's eh, eh, it mentions national mobile phone campaign. Now I am assuming that this is under the heading of road safety. This is about eh, eh, you know, not using your mobile phone when you're driving. I, I am making an assumption because I can think of all sorts of issues that the police may have an interest in in terms of eh, you know, mobile phone usage, be it theft, scams and social media and all, you know, various other things. So I was just really wondering what that national mobile phone campaign is alluding to and what's been done locally regarding it.
Eh, I'll, I'll take that boss. Yes. So, so nationally, over a tw- over a 12 month period, the, the roads policing units set what's called the, the national calendar of, of road safety activity that runs from obviously April to April. And they have themes that, that, that pick. And normally the themes, you know, stay the same. Like there's a national speed campaign, eh, young drivers fatal campaign eh, eh, etcetera. So in July, between the 22nd and the 28th of July, they ran the national mobile phone campaign. So one, there's an education piece about that because as we all know, the majority of us drive cars, we drive around in our own cars. And daily we see people still using mobile phones, still texting. Eh, eh, so it's about that education piece. It's dangerous, it causes accidents, eh, it causes road deaths, it kills people, there are consequences to your actions. So part of that, round that period in July, there would be a lot of media messaging, corporate and comms coming out. So we, we ran it locally, as I say, the roads policing units will then go out and, and, and for that day, they'll target mobile phone uses. So they'll start, they'll sit at the roadside and rather than sitting there with a speed gun, they'll sit there watching more and, and target. And not to say that they don't do this. And I, I, I looked at the figures this week. Unfortunately, I don't have the figures for Dundee. Eh, it's actually roads policing can only provide it this time with the Tayside figures and, and, and they're not huge. So and, and the 22nd and 28th of July during the national mobile phone campaign in the Tayside area, there were seven warnings given and 11 tickets handed out. Now, it's definitely 11 tickets too many. Eh, but I think if we were to ask how many were handed out, then we'd probably say a lot more on that because what we see on a daily basis. However, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging offence to, to police because you have to, you know, you have to be sure the person is using the mobile phone. Eh, if you're driving alongside, you have to be, you know, there has to be enough time to, to pull them over, to deal with it. They might be pulling, they might be moving across opposing carriageway and it's just not safe to stop them. So. But compare that to the year to date up until September, there were 18 warnings and, and 88 ticketed in Tayside. So 88 people have, have been given tickets for, for mobile phone use in, in the last period since April. Eh, so you know, it's the, the figures are there, the national mobile phone campaign helps that. But it doesn't mean that our roads policing and our local policing teams are not ticketing offenders on a daily basis. It's just that, that, that period will just concentrate on the communication, the education piece of, of using your mobile phone and driving.
Yep, that's a very comprehensive reply. Very grateful Colin, thanks.
Billy Scott.
Thanks convenor. I have three questions if that's okay.
Yeah, go for it.
My first one is quite a, a straightforward one. It's in respect of operation challenge. And in the report, it mentions the work that's being done in respect of e-bikes and um, off-road bikes. But the issue that gets raised with me all the time and I've raised it at this scrutiny committee before are electric scooters. I get lots of complaints about those and I just wanted to check that operation challenge will also include eh, the use of or the inappropriate use of eh, of, of electric scooters.
Yeah, yeah, Bailey Scott, absolutely. I mean, the, the antisocial part eh, eh, has always been around off-road motorbikes in Dundee. And then we've obviously then come into the era where we now have e-bikes. But the electric scooter, yes. Eh, eh, well, we have the same issues using, using pavements, you know, you're using other ways other than the road and, and general antisocial riding of electric scooters. There's a lot of education there for parents, in particular this time of year coming up to Christmas and when they gift them. And, and that's something we'll move forward to as we come to Christmas about that education piece. But no, eh, eh, we'll include that. However, we do see the more antisocial behaviour and, and criminality comes from the use of e-bikes as in the Suron, you know, electric motorbikes and off-road motorbikes. And there seems to be a different trend around e-scooters, but not, not nice for local communities when there's people riding on pavements and knocking people over or coming in front of cars. So no, it'll all be included in the one.
That's good. Thank you. I also wanted to ask about the, the mention you made of shoplifting. And in particular, you mentioned the BP garage on the Kingsway and Sainsbury's. And it did seem to be a couple of individuals that had, had a few um, uh, repeat uh, visits to these premises. Eh, I, I just wondered whether these are just eh, individuals who have habitual eh, eh, habitual offenders individually? Or, or whether they're stealing to order and maybe part of a shoplifting gang? And do we have shoplifting gangs operating in the city?
Yeah, so, so they, they were individuals who were eh, habitual shoplifters, probably feeding sadly a, a, a drug habit. And they were selling it individually. So and eh, eh, you know, to local people. So they, they were arrested, targeted and, and one has actually been remanded as a result of the persistent shoplifting eh, eh, at that area. With regards to shoplifting gangs in the area, that there is no evidence of that in, yet in Dundee that I'm seeing. Yes, it's a trend nationally with eh, you know, Romanian gangs or, or, you know, or people from the Balkans or, you know, certain organised crime groups who will come in gangs and shoplift. However, in Dundee, I'm not seeing any trend at the moment. A, a, a shoplifter is spiking, one because of the cost of living crisis and, and two because, you know, sadly individuals who are, who are struggling with drug abuse or, or such like eh, eh, using shoplifting to, to fund habits. And, and we're obviously assisting that with signposting and support, not just enforcement. But eh, there's a lot of good work done at the BP and, and BP nationally brought in their European loss prevention security officer and he travelled here to Dundee and, and looked at that. So a lot of support from the retailers, they've been really positive recently. And that's definitely assisted us greatly in reducing the numbers there.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is in respect of, of eh, non-crime hate incidents. Because in recent weeks, there's been an awful lot of press coverage about that, particularly in the way that the guidance is being applied in, in England. I just wondered whether that's eh, an issue eh, here in Dundee or with eh, nationally. Eh, because I, I didn't see anything in the, the paperwork that we had today about that.
No, the, eh, super ten Smith and I have discussed this and it may be something that we, we bring to the next scrutiny with regards to reporting on, on hate crime and non-hate, hate crime incidents. I don't know what the national picture is, but eh, locally I'm not seeing, you know, a, a trend or a, or an increase in non-hate crime incidents or in fact hate crime incidents. And, and the ones that we have had recently, you know, around particular pro Palestinian parades and eh, 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 and other events in the city centre. We've identified the individuals, we've arrested and, you know, we've prosecuted there. So. But it's certainly something if you wish, I can bring to the next scrutiny and super ten Smith and I can discuss that about eh, eh, about, you know, figures, numbers and, and how it's, it's trending nationally.
Well, that would be helpful. And also the way you interpret what is a non-crime hate incident and what is a hate crime and the differentiation, the difference, the difference between between the two of them and how you apply the guidance that's been issued eh, from Police Scotland for that.
Absolutely. So no, let's bring that to the next scrutiny and I'll. Absolutely. So no, let's bring that to the next scrutiny and we'll contain that in the next report.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. Councillor Black.
Yep, two quick comments. One was, there was quite a lot of preventative work done in Kirkton around the time of Halloween, cleaning up wood and inflammable stuff that was lying around. And so well done to the council for getting involved in that, working with the police. The other thing was, I was really pleased to hear what you said, officer, about working with the local community and the importance of what they do. There was a Halloween night I attended and while there was an incident going on down at the beauty shops, I believe, there were lots of kids and young people and myself in the Halloween event, keeping out the way, which shows the value of having such events. And the only crimes that were committed in the community centre that night were against donuts and apples because looking for apples and trying to get donuts through your teeth. So it was a very good event and it kept people busy and a whole lot of children attended and young people. And absolutely, I'm sure that helps to prevent people getting involved in incidents on the street. So thanks for recognising the value of the local community work.
Okay, no, thanks for the comments. Interestingly enough, on the twentieth of December, at the Scottish Police College with the ECC to discuss the success of Moonbeam and our operation here. And then all the other commanders from Scotland have been invited as well, in particular Edinburgh. So there's definitely good learning that we could take from here and give over to Edinburgh with what Dundee's done. And really, the heart of that lies with that community who, you know, the success that is, yes, it's our officers and the work that we've done. But no, definitely the community and the message that they've done. So we want to take some of that good work and share it across Scotland, I think.
Okay, Councillor Shaw.
Yeah, Colin, can I just verify that? I was at COSLA's Criminal Justice meeting and the ACC there was talking about Moonbeam and how successful it'd been locally. So it has been recognised Scotland-wide. Unfortunately, we've got to get in the rough before we can get out of the rough. But at least the learnings are there and picked up. So well done. I guess my question, and again, it was something that I'd picked up nationally and it's obviously sixteen days of activism and just looking for that qualification again that enlightened some of the press headlines recently with regards to domestic abuse that within the city, if we have high levels of reporting, it's seen as a positive because it's seen as people feeling uncomfortable coming forwards. And at the same time, because of the way that you as a service deal with it and will look at multiple partners that often on one occasion, one person is reported, but there'll be a series of indictments because you look at not just individual partnerships, but you look at partners and ongoing partnerships and basically just don't look at it as an individual case, but look at the whole situation as the individual.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for that, yes. And as you know, the sixteen days of activism is running again this year, led by DCI Gen Re tear, and there'll hopefully be lots of positives over the next couple of weeks with regards to that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I better not make a comment about getting in the rough. I think that's a golfing term that's a poor choice this week, I think.
Yeah, I could care.
You're welcome. I'll just, you mentioned obviously at the start of what went on in Downfield and I think that was excellent work that went on over a longer, a long period of time. I know that sort of Fire and Rescue Scotland have been engaged with the community doing on a regular basis about some of the things that have happened in the past. And I'm really pleased that it worked out well this year. But it's been a few years in the build-up towards we got away without anything this year, I think. But hopefully we'll be keeping something going so as to make sure that that just goes to bed and doesn't come back in the Kirkton area. Because one thing that I was able to do for a number of people that are elderly, that have lived in Kirkton a lot of years and they've seen endless things, but where they live in real fear of something like that kicking off, no good place to be. And I'm glad to be able to say to them that, you know, I think the work that's going on in the background will make a real difference this year. So I was really pleased when, you know, that level of early intervention work that went on in the background, clearing the rubbish away, you know, and that level of intelligence work that went on was really good and successful. So, you know, hopefully we can, we can make sure that we're not going to have the streets blocked off like we didn't Kirkton in the past or any other area in Dundee for all that. And when these things have happened and we're getting, you know, where vital services have been attacked, as potentially happened in Edinburgh, that'd be the last thing we want. So in using that intelligence, I think I've sent on to Police Scotland some of the concerns about the people that have lived in Craigisle about vehicle theft. And I see on a regular residence post them coming up with that level of concern. I'm wondering whether it's, you know, when it's magnified on Facebook, you know, it just puts fear and alarm into our community. Wondering if he's a link to these Facebook posts that go up and, you know, how you can put resource in to make sure that people start to feel a wee bit safer when that level of alarm, whether it's, you know, car theft in the area or, you know, break-ins that have happened.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, social media is fantastic and you're right to say social media can cause alarm for all the wrong reasons sometimes. It's not something that we would monitor because of the community groups, you know, the, you know, the people sharing, going about their business, their human rights, sharing information. And the last thing they want is probably the police reporting or monitoring what they're saying on groups. And it then becomes probably less comfortable and less open and honest. However, our community teams are there, they're in the communities, they're sharing information, they're speaking to local people. And what I would plead was, and we have spoken about the instance in Craigisle via email this week, that we would invite the Dundee public to report as much as they can. So that would be our message. And so for instance, in Craigisle, you know, it's not, it's not a great position. One car was stolen and used in a number of crimes. There was a house breaking with intent to a house where the intent was to get keys to steal another car. And then there's another reported instance of two males trying doors. So four incidents, not nice incidents, are not different from any other in the country. However, though, in states like this where we have working families who own cars and, you know, unfortunately organised criminals or criminals will target these. So but what I see in a trend is that sometimes they see something and don't report it. So, you know, there might be a suspicious vehicle driving about, that they might have heard something, they might have seen someone on social media. So whether that's via one-on-one or contact us or get in touch with the local community team, you know, I would emphasise the need to report everything to us. And that's where we get our intelligence. So if we know there's activity in that area, then we can concentrate stop checks in the area. We can have our prevention officers look at the architecture and CCTV and we can put crime patrols in the area and I can use all the available resources. So for instance, Craigisle has been hit a couple of times. So, you know, we'll use officers, unacquainted crime patrols, utilising overtime that we'll have to dedicate patrols to that area. So but I would just emphasise this about the public telling us, but we won't particularly monitor social media because then that would become unfair into the monitoring what's going on social media. And if that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I just kind of wondered whether, you know, usually these are set up in a community by a concerned individual and wondered whether they would be happy to have linked it to the police or some, you know, it's maybe a need to put on a post.
Kavina, I'll just add that when we have specialists focused operations, we do monitor social media. But I think the point I'll make as well is that our officers all live in the communities and all our partners live in the communities. So we generally find out. And when we do find out of a concern, because the perception of fear and actual crime are two different things and we are acutely aware of that. And when we're aware of some fear, we will do some focused media activity around that, just to provide some reassurance.
Okay. Well, thanks very much for that. There appears to be no further questions. Is this report agreed now? Okay. Thank you very much for that. Willie, we'll move on then.
Okay, thanks, Kavina. That concludes the fire and police items. Take you on to item eight, Internal Audit Plan Update and Progress Report. And Cathy Wiley is here to speak to that item.
Yep. Over to yourself then, Cathy.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. The first report I've got today is the Update and Progress Report with the progress with the internal audit plan and the implementation of the agreed internal audit recommendations. I'm also updating you today just to let you know that we've got an addition to the plan. The piece of work is already underway in terms of our review of the mosaic system payments, which was added at the request of the service. And I've also got a small update in section five for you around the new public sector internal audit standards. These will be coming in, hopefully be finalised by the end of this month. And they will come in to enforce from the first of April next year. They're going to be known as the Global Internal Audits UK Public Sector Standards. That's a bit of a mouthful. But it's basically the Global Internal Audit Standards with two amendments. One through a piece of, sorry, a code that will come around the public sector in general and another one from SIPFA, which will deal with local government specifically. So I've done some preliminary gap analysis around the consultation documents that have come out. Once it's finalised later this month, I will be finalising all of that and come back to you at some future meeting just to let you know what the implications are in a bit more detail for the service itself and also for some of the things that it's requiring some of the officers and the members to do, which maybe go a wee bit further than we've done before in terms of your engagement with audit. And this report, from page ninety-three on, you'll see the plan. You'll see there are a number of items that we'd hope to bring to this committee that we didn't quite manage to get finalised. But the good news is that all of those are out as draft reports if they aren't coming to this committee today. And so we're expecting that those will come to the next meeting in February. We've got another piece of information just around the implementation of the external audit recommendations. So we've currently got sixty outstanding open actions in comparison to forty-eight actions the last time we reported to you. That represents twenty new actions and eight actions that have been closed. So that's good to see that we have got progress in moving those on. We still have a few actions that have passed their original agreed date, which need new dates to be agreed. But we're working with services to get that done. I'm happy to answer any questions on this if there are any.
Yep. Is there any questions for Cathy on this report? Oh, okay. Is this report agreed? Okay, so we'll move on, Willie.
Yeah, thanks, Kavina. Item nine then is internal audit reports. Again, Cathy Wiley, we speak to this item.
Okay, Cathy, straight back.
Thank you. So these are the actual reports that have been finalised since the last meeting. We've got four reports coming to you today. Recruitment, which is given substantial assurance. Absence management and staff wellbeing with limited assurance. The Safety Alarm Response Centre, limited assurance, and corporate governance, substantial assurance. I'm not going to say too much about each of them, but I just want to just highlight a few things about about those. In terms of recruitment, the controls and processes in place for recruitment are robust and well-designed, although there is scope to improve succession planning arrangements. And the findings from our audit were in line with the findings from the recent Audit Scotland Thematic Best Value Review and Succession Planning. So there aren't any real surprises there in terms of what we found. And you'll see on page, sorry, got the right page. My mouse has stopped working. That's helpful. Right, page one hundred and eight. You'll see that we had comprehensive assurance for three of the areas that we were looking at. And the one area with the succession planning is limited assurance. The next one that we're reporting is the absence management and staff wellbeing, and this is limited.
Kavina, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could I maybe just ask that we have questions on each bit each report as we go forward? Because actually, I've got questions on three out of the four, not the last one. And it just all gets, becomes a mishmash if we, if we sort of plough on to the second one before we've asked questions on the first one, if you follow my drift.
No problem then. I'll bring you in for a question on the first report then, I think it's recruitment.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful and I'm grateful to you, Kavina and to Cathy. And my question really is less to do with Cathy and more to do with perhaps Lindsay's head of people. And it's really about what progress is being made about the whole issue of succession planning following this report. I think we're all very well aware of the challenges facing the age of the workforce going forward and the need to ensure that all departments of the council have, you know, take, as it says in your report, Cathy, due recognition to the workforce and succession planning process. And I was just really wondering what progress is being made in respect to that. Because I think we would all agree that ensuring that that is well managed is really rather important for the future working of the council going forward.
Thank you, Bill McPherson, for the question. And thank you, Kavina, if I come in here. Yeah, so just to add to the comments which are within the report around what we've done as a response to highlighting the need for succession planning. We have got the tools in place to allow managers to monitor this. So there's a dashboard for each service, which is updated every three months with new data, which covers current staff, new starts, leaders, levers, sorry, turnover, age profile, et cetera. And we have also published a resource with the workforce planning tools around that. In terms of the succession planning, I think I would broaden out that terminology to be workforce planning. And that tallies in, as Ms Wiley said, it tallies in a lot with what we heard from the thematic review, but also the work that's taken place with Scottish Local Government Workforce Report, which was instigated by SPDS and Improvement Service. So we are not alone in these hard-to-fill posts and these challenges that come from a number of fronts. So these are being monitored also organisationally from a risk perspective in terms of our ability to deliver on a capability and capacity front. So my approach in terms of making sure that we can respond to workforce planning in the round is going to be multifaceted. A key part of that is making sure that people's services are structured to deliver well on that. So I'm looking and talking to the team at the moment about how do we approach talent in a rounder sense to make sure that we're thinking about every stage of the employee lifecycle, thinking about recruitment, thinking about schools' awareness of our jobs, thinking about developing our own people, growing our own staff, use of modern apprentices, use of graduate apprentices, and just making sure that we balance out the need to be very careful with our budget alongside our absolute need to have a ready workforce in place.
Bill McPherson.
Yeah, thanks very much for that, Lindsay. You're obviously already making a significant impression there. So that's very reassuring because quite clearly, given the age profile of the workforce, there's a significant issue in terms of ensuring that we plan well for the future. So very grateful for that fulsome reply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe if I can ask a question on recruitment as well, Lindsay. Given that, you know, we've been an organisation that's constantly saying goodbye to individuals because it's downsizing and the bit of work that somebody done landed on someone else's desk. And, you know, events where they moved on and hardly forgot that bit of work was done by them. You know, so I'm wondering how do we best capture the things to make sure that there isn't that bit of vital work that drops off? I mean, I think that, you know, I often think that the lack of or the potential skill set lacking when it come to the problem with Hidgley Roofs a few years ago and information not getting passed on landed by someone almost made it happen, but they're not here anymore. So how do we capture in job description and in and the value and the bit that somebody does when someone leaves and lends that bit extra?
Thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question and through you, convener. Yeah, absolutely. I think a lot of this is to do with we talk about onboarding our staff, but it's also really important that we do do offboarding as well in terms of collating all that information and making sure that we do when somebody's exiting the organisation, we do do that knowledge capture. And I think you're absolutely right. Potentially traditionally, we might be better at doing that for some of our more desk-based roles. So it's actually in terms of giving out clear guidance around that stage for some of our specialist posts out in the frontline. And that, again, is a key part of a talent function is around onboarding and offboarding in terms of that employee lifecycle. So very cognisant of that, also thinking about content of roles and actually how these might change. So when somebody does leave or, you know, we actually take a step back and we think about how that work has been done traditionally. We're very conscious of our budgets. We're very conscious of making sure that we digitally transform as and when we can, and it's not always possible. But in some fields, making sure that we are making best use of our funds and whether or not, as I say, any of that work can be assisted by digital means. So I'm working closely with our new head of digital and customer around the digitally enabled workforce and making sure that we have those considerations in place as well.
Okay, thanks for that. Is there any further questions on recruitment? That be no, can this section be agreed? Yeah, okay, then Cathy will move on.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the absence management and staff wellbeing. And we identified that generally there were well-designed processes and controls in place for sickness absence management and staff wellbeing with controls over reporting sickness absence statistics operating effectively. We identified a number of areas of good practice. However, we did find that there were a significant number of instances where the procedures in relation to managing sickness absence hadn't been followed fully. And that is the reason why this is a limited assurance overall level of assurance for this report. In terms of the staff health and wellbeing, we did find support initiatives were generally well promoted and information on the support and advice available was readily accessible to staff. However, we did identify some areas where there could be improvement around the ways in which staff are able to feed to feedback about these areas and how effectiveness of the support and initiatives is being measured. But I'll stop there just in case there are questions. I see there are some there, I think, so.
Okay, well, bringing Billy Scott to start with then.
Thanks, convener. My questions probably should be directed to Lindsay, I think. For years, we've been getting departmental plan updates coming to committee that record a growing level of sickness absences and me our level. And we're assured that action's been taken to deal with that. And yet here we have an audit report that said there's limited assurance in respect of the procedures that we have in place for that. And some of the things, for example, are there's no definition of a long-term sickness absence, but I thought employment law recognises that a long-term sickness absence is for weeks or more. So why wouldn't that feature in the council's guidance? And when it says that the long-term sickness absence process has not always been followed, well, how can it possibly follow be followed correctly if it doesn't say what a long-term sickness absence is? When it talks about the oversight of compliance with sickness absence management processes, surely it's in managers' key work objectives that they should be overseeing sickness absence within the department. And that ought to be getting picked up in performance reviews if managers aren't applying the procedures as they should be applying them. And if we want to make inroads into our budget deficit, reducing the sickness absence can help a big deal to down that road. So really, we need action to be taken to deal with these issues. And I know we've recently employed two wellbeing officers to try and attend to some of this, but I think I'm kind of needing now an assurance that all this is going to be done. And the next time we have an update in the departmental plan at committee, it's going to show a decrease in the level of sickness absence rather than an increase.
Okay, well, over to you then, Lindsay. There's a few questions in there.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey Scott. And I couldn't agree with you more in terms of the the level of importance that we need to attach to it. And if I opened with a general statement, first of all, to give you that assurance, just to highlight that today, in fact, we held a session with our leading team Dundee community just centring around wellbeing and attendance. And so we spent a full morning with them going through all the tools that are available to them, signposting to resources, highlighting our statistics and our figures around how we're performing nationally, how we perform within our family group and actually how we're doing on our outstanding items that are particular to our policy. And we had that exact same session, but even more enhanced version of it the week prior for our senior leaders within the organisation as headed up by the chief executive. So it's very much front and centre of the work that we're doing. In terms of the specific questions that came through the audit and that you've highlighted yourself, we are at the moment reviewing that policy and that review will be complete by the end of this year. And we've done a lot to make sure that it's very, very clear of what constitutes long-term absence within that. And actually, the data that's coming through for managers is extremely clear in terms of differentiating between long term and short term, as well as trends, as well as being able to look back over several years, as well as being able to compare and contrast what the key reasons for absence might be. So just to highlight some other activities that are taking part, taking place as part of that review of the policy. We've got, we're liaison with our lived experience group around being trauma-informed and making sure that our terminology is consistent throughout letters and throughout policy in terms of that support between support and challenge. We've got, as I say, clarity around what the provision of our absence data will be, guidance on how to review and monitor that. We've got, we've done an update around whose role is, what the roles are and the responsibilities are, particularly in relation to managers about managing absence. A real focus on timescales that's been taken out through our business partner teams and through those new posts that you highlighted there. Increased guidance around fit notes, which can often be a sensitive area for discussion with employees, so really helping with the training around that. Stronger focus on the applications of our triggers and monitors within our processes. And again, increased guidance around the letters. In terms of the post which you highlighted, the introduction of the attendance support advisers has really brought down the number of outstanding monitors and actions. We've got them in those hotspot areas actually able to go out and work with colleagues face to face. Our wellbeing advisor is reinvigorating our wellbeing ambassador community. So that's a champion model similar to what we utilise with our digital transformation. And just enabling people to have contacts within their own service to help around, particularly around mental health and wellbeing situation. As I'm sure you would say, the training on this is hugely important. So it is mandatory for managers to undertake the promoting health and attendance policy training. We're looking at how best do we ensure that people attend that, pardon the pun, attend the training and also make sure that it's a face-to-face session because we have found that this has been much more beneficial for managers and colleagues. So we've got a report around where the attendance at the training might be missing and actually getting in direct contact with line managers around any of their team who are still to attend that and how does this tally with other data? Also in terms of signposting, when anybody has a member of staff who goes off sick, they'll be receiving emails into them in terms of signposting where the resources are, what their responsibilities are in terms of that policy. And we're making sure that from a frontline perspective, we're reaching colleagues there also. We've got poster campaigns, we've got QR codes, we've got a number of ways, as well as via our colleagues actually visiting to make sure that the confidence and the skills are in place around this.
Okay, thank you. That's a very helpful response, very detailed response. Just want to follow up on one thing, that why was there ever any ambiguity at all about what constitutes a long-term sickness absence? When employment law stipulates what an employment, what a long-term sickness absence is, and I would have thought that our plans right from the outset would have been robust enough to have all that detail in it.
I'm afraid because I wasn't here, I'm unsure as to why that there was any ambiguity there. All I can do from this point forward is make sure that we are abundantly clear. I think I could be confident in saying that the data that goes out to managers as part of that dashboard would have made it clear, but perhaps it wasn't summed up specifically within that policy. So we're absolutely working to make sure that there's no doubt about it at all going forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. And my original question has been touched on by Bailey Scott, so you know, there's no point in repeating. There's one specific aspect, though, regarding the information on page one hundred and twelve regarding the average number of sickness absence days per employee. For twenty twenty two, twenty three, the report indicates was thirteen point six days. But that's not the information that was contained in the Corporate Services Act, eh, Service Plan that went to committee very, very recently, where it indicated that the statistic, the thirteen point six was actually sixteen point two seven days, rising to seventeen point five five days in twenty twenty three, twenty four. Now, the reason I know that is because I asked the question about it when that report came to committee recently. And because, you know, I expressed really the level of concern that I think Bailey Scott's alluded to there regarding the level of the absence level. And I asked questions around staff wellbeing around that and so on, which I'll not repeat today. I was just really wondering, are we looking at apples and pears here? Have we included maybe leisure and culture Dundee and Dundee Health Social Care Partnership employees in one statistic but not the other? But if that were the case, that would mean the other that are dragged in have must have very low levels of sickness absence, given that the vast majority of employees we're talking about are Dundee City Council employees. So I'm just really wondering, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot, I think I would just really like it checked and you could come back to me after the meeting. But why thirteen point six in this report, when in fact it was sixteen point two seven reported in the Corporate Services Service Plan, when it was reported to City Governance Committee very recently? Thanks.
If that's something you'd prefer to come back on, so you could check the other report and the statistics that made that up or quite happy for that to be circulated around the membership with the scrutiny committee.
Thank you, convener. Yes, I think that would be best.
Okay, I'm sure Bailey McPherson will be happy enough with that as well.
Yeah, I'm indeed, yeah.
Okay, I see no further questions on this particular part of the report then. Is this section agreed as well? Okay, we'll move on then again, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the Safety Alarm Response Centre, and this was a piece of work just to look at the operation of the SAC. When this was established, it took on responsibility for a number of existing functions, but the full extent of the responsibilities that has were never clearly defined and have been added to over time. I think while we were undertaking the audit, it was clear that that management within this area were aware that there was a need for more developed controls in a number of areas. And in particular, a need for more clearly defined objectives and procedures, improved systems of management information and a review of their resources. And that work has actually already started. So whilst it's clear that there is a clear plan of operations underpinned by a defined set of objectives and responsibilities, is necessary to be able to gain assurance over all of the SAC's effectiveness? I think it is something that I should draw to your attention that the role of the SAC in relation to council-wide resilience and business continuity planning for major incidents is clear and effective. Controls in relation to emergency responses are in place because I think that would be an area that you might have some concern over. So it's just to give you that reassurance on that area. But happy to take any questions.
Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. Regarding the information on page one one seven in which, you know, among the following areas for improvement, operational key performance indicators for the SAC have not been defined and no performance monitoring framework implemented. I think that's pretty shocking, frankly, that any service would not have key operational performance indicators in place and no performance monitoring. And I'm just really, I think this sits with the neighbourhood services, doesn't it? I'm just really wondering if we could have some assurance that that's actually being tackled, because I think that's a prerequisite for the good running of any service.
Okay, so I'll be able to make comment on that.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the question. I can provide that reassurance, Bailey McPherson, that all of the recommendations that are detailed within the audit report are being followed up, and particularly that point you've made regarding the performance indicator. So hopefully that provides you with some reassurance.
Okay, what would be good is if Mr Boyle could perhaps keep the scrutiny committee members updated with progress on that. I think we would really want to see that implemented ASAP. And we're not going to the past and why it ever got there like that. I think we are much better looking at the situation going forward. And I'm conscious that Mr Boyle hasn't exactly been in post, you know, that 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 long. So the fundamental point, I'm sure Mr Boyle has got it in hand. But if he could provide members of scrutiny committee with updates in in due course, that would be really appreciated. That would give us that reassurance. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I appreciate that, convener. So I appreciate you going to do that, Tony. Thanks. Thanks very much. I think that would be useful for the rest of the scrutiny committee to be made aware of the key targets and key performance. Jim, councillor Black, you looking for the question on this one?
Yes, it's on page one hundred and seventeen as well. And it talks about communication between staff members, arrangements for logging incidents, communication being generally manual processes. I wonder, is there any plan to bring in any kind of IT to make that kind of stuff more efficient?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Black. Yep, I'm happy to confirm that we're also looking at that as well. I can see that Mr Stirling is wanting to come in.
Good, Tom.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Thanks, convener. Yeah, so the team now have the firm step system in place. So that situation's changed. They can record on firm step. That's been in place for two or three months and that's actually going to help us as part of the work to develop what would be realistic performance indicators as well. So that's part of that ongoing work that Tony referred to. But yes, there are now, you know, proper systems in place for recording as part of that whole process of kind of updating all the all the aspects that are covered in the in the audit report.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there any further questions on this section of the report? Can that be agreed? Okay, we'll move on again then, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The final one is corporate governance. We've got substantial assurance for this. The annual governance statement questionnaire and the underpinning process by which information is compiled to inform the governance statement is well designed and delivers the necessary assurance over the requirements of relevant guidance. We did identify a number of good practice in this area, but we also have a few recommendations which would enhance the process and just improve the quality of the assurance that's been obtained around this. Again, happy to take any questions.
Okay, is there any questions for Cathy on this? So this report agreed that. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Cathy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Take you on to item ten, by annual reporting complaints with poor by chief executive, and I believe that Andrea Calder may be speaking to this item.
Okay, Andrea.
Thank you, convener. So this is the first six months of data for complaints for twenty three, twenty four. Oh, sorry, twenty four, twenty five. I'm a year behind. So it takes us from April to September this year. And it also includes an update on the annual information from the S P S O for last year. So the report is in a similar format to previously. So we set out the key sections within the appendix. So we still have our key performance indicators. We tell you about the S P O information, what our customers are saying about their satisfaction and also areas for improvement as well as. and also areas for improvement as well as compliments. The format's just slightly different, but hopefully it's user-friendly. We are seeing some improvement in performance, which is good to see, particularly for stage one. Stage two is still a bit stubborn, not where we would like it to be. But what we are seeing is a lot of the complaints are becoming at stage two are a lot more complex and often involve cross-service. But you can see for stage two, the average number of days, although it's increased, it's sitting at 28 days. So it's not significantly away from the 20-day target, but we want to see that reduce. And I'm happy just to take any questions.
Okay, Billy McPherson.
Thanks, convener. And thanks, Andrea. I should say definite improvement at stage one and obviously a little bit of a way to go on stage two. Complaints at stage two. My questions about the information in 6.2 regarding those relatively small number that find their way to the Scottish Public Services Ombudsman. And in particular, the fact that there were two investigations that were fully upheld by the ombudsman. Now, I should say before I ask this question, I fully understand that you'll not go into the details of, the specific details of particular cases, may have personal information in them. I understand that because we're talking about a very small number, just two complaints. But the very fact that two complaints were upheld by the Scottish Public Service Ombudsman, I suppose my question is really around what sort of areas were they in? And what sort of learning has been obtained from the outcome of these particular cases? If they have any wider resonance among service delivery as a whole, if you follow my drift.
Yeah, so one area was around antisocial behaviour. So complaint regarding antisocial behaviour. And the other one was around children's social work, family support. So that one's probably was a bit more complex, the second one. And it did take a bit longer to deal with and there was a number of issues in there. I think some of the learning that's come through from both of them is just making sure people are fully adhering to the complaint procedure and that they're clear, clearly keeping people updated about when things are going to take a bit longer. Making sure people are fully listening to complaints. And then we're setting out those complaints in an easy format for people to understand and being clear about the next stage. And we've found that through some of our standard checking. And that's things that we're trying to incorporate into the training as we go forward. So just refresh your training on different things like that. One of the other aspects is just making sure that nobody who is referenced in the complaint is involved in the complaint being reviewed. So just making sure we've got a kind of degree of separation and maybe it's another service within that area that is looking at the complaint.
Okay, that's very helpful, Andrea. All I was really wanting was some reassurance that, you know, on the back of something that the ombudsman upheld, uphold, we make sure that there is some learning from that. And obviously, that is clearly happening. And I should say in a very positive sense, the number of fully upheld cases against Dundee City Council by the ombudsman remains very, very low. So that gives us, I think, all a measure of reassurance. But grateful to Andrea for her reply.
Yeah, my question for myself, it is in relation to the public service ombudsman. I was originally looking to establish what the costs of these were to us, but on putting them right. But perhaps it would be more useful if the findings of the public service ombudsman or the report that they give back to council can be circulated around the scrutiny committee. So that the scrutiny committee can be more aware of the issues that the public service ombudsman upheld against council. So can that happen?
So what we can do is we can look at the key findings and summarise that. So we wouldn't maybe provide you the detail of the full case. So I think we could do some kind of summary of that. Because some of it has got probably personal information in it, although it is fairly anonymised. But we could give you a snapshot of what the case was about, the area, and also what the key learning is.
I remember, just that I remember seeing a report for the public service ombudsman that we reviewed at council. And it was, you know, somewhere in the mid-Craggy area or Craggy area. And it just looked like council were putting the blockers on somebody, getting, you know, a ramp outside their house that would have made it difficult, would have made it easier for them to live. And, you know, and reflection, it looked really bad on council, it would be picked up for something like that. So it would be useful to have an understanding of what the, how the ombudsman came to these findings. So that we have a greater understanding of particularly what went wrong, that council got that upheld against them. The other question that I've got is really the chief executive. If we're seeing this, you know, a number of cases that are cross-departmental, do we think that we've got everything in council sitting in the right side? Or often find that when it comes to committees, having the recent rehash that the administration put through, very difficult to understand what's going to appear and when. Because it doesn't make the greatest sense to me anymore that once upon a time did. So. It would be easier if things are closer to making a difference, or problems being resolved.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So in terms of the council's operational structure, I believe the current format that we operate in around corporate services, city development, neighbourhood services and children and family works. In terms of the committee structure, as you'll be aware, committee agreed that there was a change in structure. And that is supported by officers with relevant reports going to relative service committees. That should not in any way stop our ability to respond to complaints which cross various services, given the team approach that we operate. And any challenges around that can be raised within operational management teams or indeed the council leadership team who meet on a frequent basis.
Okay, I'm happy enough with that response. Right, is there any other questions on this report? The report agreed. Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Take you on to item 11, neighbourhood services service plan. This report was remitted to this committee by city governance on 19th of August for further consideration.
Okay, is there any questions on this report? The report agreed. Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thanks for the meaning. Item 12, council plan. Again, this was remitted to this committee by city governance on 18th of November for further consideration.
Good. Any questions? No, report agreed. Okay, that appears to be the business. Thanks very much for your time. That's appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks for the fun. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye.